Welcome everyone to the Town of Wells planning board meeting on Monday, April 7th. The first item for discussions this evening will be to review the minutes of March 3rd. Did anyone have any questions, comments, additions or deletions to page one? Or two? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to accept them as written.
Steve, I was absent.
Okay, so I make the motion to accept the minutes as written, second?
Second, all those in favor? That is unanimous.
And abstention.
And one abstention would be?
Go ahead, go ahead.
And the next item is March 17th, which I don't believe we received those minutes yet. So we'll be moving on to public hearings, which there are an unscheduled. The next would be development review. The first item on the discussion would be to receive a site plan amendment application for North Star Cantina. Are they here or the representative? Please come forward.
To receive site plan amendment application for North Star Cantina.
Second?
Second, all those in favor? That is unanimous, you've been received. Would you like to tell everybody who you are?
Yeah, sure, my name is Maureen Ademar. So at this point, I do own 1574 Post Road, where all the cafes used to be. Year and a half ago, I changed the site plan to open restaurant, general business, and half and other half is a business use, which been approved, so it's been about year and a half since then. Then what happened was four ago, which is a business that I opened, tried to go with the vending machines, didn't go as well as planned, so I shut down for a little bit. And I put a food truck about two, three months ago that I came here to do amendments, so we can temporarily to put it in, with the hope that we would amend it further where we open the restaurant without the kitchen and the food truck act as a kitchen outside. So that's right now, that's exactly why I'm here, putting up, we're gonna move a food truck in the back where the patio. Right now, the patio is the top extending it. And we're gonna be extending the building, so restaurant will be 2,300, because we're still gonna do the back, even though there's no kitchen, but it's gonna be obvious dishwasher, prep food, anything, but there's gonna be no open fires, no stoves, anything like that. And the front will be the bar area with the lounge chairs and areas. So it's gonna be more cocktail, craft cocktails, more live music, and more like smaller bites versus versus sit-down dinners. And by having a food truck outside, it will eliminate our possibly too many employees, like service, which is gonna be probably just a runner, and people are gonna order and pick up food on their own. But it's gonna be mostly crafted cocktails and a themed menu, whatnot. And we are hoping to extend the patio. The question was, why do we need so much room? We're kinda hoping to open up a little bit, because right now, it's a hill, so it's hidden a lot. So we're trying to do something for the town where people can come and sit down, relax with the lounge chairs, possibly outside, in the summer, we'll have some music, live music. In the winter, we'll bring it inside and have live music there. So we're not planning to have a lot of people there, it's just more for atmosphere. That's why we're gonna be trying to extend that much to gravel areas, so it's not too crowded. So we can put some live plants there and just make it nice and cozy and pretty. But the, basically nothing else is changing, so I did remove the shed, because I don't see me using it in a while, actually ever for the cleaning service. And I decreased the cleaning service area, because we found that we don't really use it anyway, because all my employees come and go only in the morning, and when they pick up, so nobody really lives out there. So we don't need that much space, that's why we decided to really decrease the space, where footage. But everything else is not really changing. We added couple parking lots to the side closer to the Brook Lane. We added one right behind the fenced area. We added today one, the parallel parking right, to, yep, right there, to the right of the building. And dumpster is moved at the furthest, so we can hide it. But everything else stays basically the same. You guys can see the new graded lines, where it's gonna be. And you can see the new lines for the graded, sorry, gravel, the outline gravel. So the retaining wall will be removed, it is just gonna be graded, so we have more nice view. And it's gonna be, everything else is gonna be seeded, so we can have a nice grass, and just outside area probably with some outdoor plots with like a trees and plants. That's basically it.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome.
Mike, did you have some comments for us on this?
Uh, well, the first item is just to decide to schedule a sidewalk.
So. Available this Saturday? Yeah, make that just said it, this Saturday. Like to make a motion to schedule a sidewalk for North Star Cantina, Saturday, April 12th, at 8:00 AM.
Second?
Second, all those in favor? That is unanimous.
I'm not.
So, 8 o'clock on Saturday, can you have it staked out where the patio's gonna be and things of that nature?
Absolutely, yeah. And the food truck, yes, absolutely.
And then we can go over it, and then we'll put you back on the agenda.
Okay, I guess that's, anything other questions?
And I think Mike has other comments for?
Yeah, we made a, listen, we reviewed the plan that was submitted, and actually you had your drafter already address. Almost all of them, I think, or all of them, right?
Yep, I did.
Went through that plan that you sent this morning or over the weekend, and, yep, those changes looked good.
I did. Yep. I did decide not to remove one way, because of the suggestions you made about closing the parking spaces. The reason before, I hoped to remove it, because people don't respect it.
Mm-hmm.
So now, I'm just gonna have to enforce it.
Yeah, I think our, our one concern overall was just the, the number of parking spaces and the number of seats.
Which should be this morning.
Well, you're all set?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a great night. The next item this evening will be Green Brook Lane subdivision. I need someone to receive this preliminary subdivision application. Is somebody here? Yes. Okay.
Make a motion to receive preliminary subdivision application for Green Brook Lane subdivision.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous, you've been received. Is the applicant here, please come forward. Tell everybody who you are and what you propose to do.
I'm here, Bill. Basically, I'm just breaking two lots off. I currently live on one of the lots, essentially a full lot subdivision, but I'm living on one. And the remaining land will be there. But it is a, two lots, we remove one.
Okay, um, comments, Mike?
Um, this one as well, just a first step in the process is to schedule a sidewalk. There is the existing Green Brook Lane that physically is there.
Yep.
And the road that services his existing house and would service the two new lots, is actually already there, it's built on the aerials, it looks like it's a good.
Yeah.
So.
It's all built to bring it out to town, so.
Yeah, yeah, looking at the aerials, it's, it's already there. So if we drove out to do a sidewalk, we could just park right along that road and walk the proposed lots and, and check out the road going into. Because one question we had is road naming and whether any trigger will be hit to operate this road. If this is a new road, am I not sure you're upgrading this road? But, you know, so our sidewalk, when we go out there, we can look at the condition and make sure it's passable and usable.
Yeah.
Do you have it staked out yet, Pete?
Oh, yeah, it's all staked out, yeah.
So if they scheduled it for Saturday, that would be okay?
Yeah.
Okay, make a motion to schedule a sidewalk for Green Brook Lane subdivision, Saturday, April 12th, 9:00 AM.
Second?
Second, all those in favor? That is unanimous. See you there at 9:00.
Good.
The next item this evening is gonet speed, report sidewalk results. Welcome.
Hi.
Like to tell everybody at home who you are, please.
I, I thought by now, you knew who I was.
We do, but there might be a few other people that don't know yet.
Terry Turner. Uh, gonet speed, I'm real estate development manager specialist.
Okay. Mike?
Uh, yes, we conducted a sidewalk this past Saturday, April 5th, at 8:00 AM. It was cloudy at about 38, 39 degrees. Planning board members were present, applicant was present, the owner of the property was present, and all those myself. There were Noah Butters at the sidewalk. We observed the proposed location for the, for the parking facility, and it staked out well. We looked at the buffer running along the backside of the property where it's proposed to be located, looking at the various existing vegetation that's there. There were a lot of vines that were entangled in the existing trees and whatnot, and that should be removed to protect the vegetation that's there. Also observed that the proposed driveway for the facility would most likely endanger an existing oak tree that was out there. There was an oak tree right about in this location, and the pole is right on the other side. I think the best location we were talking about was maybe to come in on an angle on the other side of that pole, or you can come on the other side of the pole and come up beside the site instead of straight into it. But there was a significant oak tree right around there, there were a couple more in this direction too, so that direction really wasn't an option. So relocation of the access driveway to be considered. On the original, or one of the original plans, I called for landscape planting right in this area, and I called for a turnaround. It looked like there was plenty of room for the turnaround to be redesigned on the site, because the, the location of that turnaround is right where the new facility is proposed. But an alternate hammerhead turnaround could be designed on the site to replace that, that old turnaround cul-de-sac. But the, the plantings along here, there, there isn't much there existing now that the vines haven't taken over. The original planting approval was for six eastern white pine was on that original plan. So evergreen for a tree of some type would need to be planted in this area to at least comply with the original approvals, and just make a better screen on the backside of that hotel area. The mislocated building was discussed, it's the building in this location, and the owner committed to submitting a mislocated building appeal this week. So that will be underway. It was noted, there was a dead pine tree right about this lo, not pine tree, it was a hardwood tree, but it was dead in that location, to be removed, that's not part of any approved buffer, so the owner was gonna remove that at any time. Also observed a temporary dumpster location in the parking lot in about this area. Looking at the old plans, there was an approved dumpster location over here. So that dumpster will have to be moved to that location. The owner commented, uh, seasonally, they traditionally brought it out to that location, because they don't plow that area, those buildings are shut down during the winter. But the, a temporary location of a dumpster would have to be fencing closed as well, so they'll have to come up with a solution for that. Speaking with the owner of the property too, he was planning on doing various landscaping improvements and changes in the front. The comments were just that that would need plenty board approval. What's there now is grandfathered, and because it's a hotel facility, there's a 60-foot required landscape buffer along Route 1. So whatever occurs for landscaping there has to get plenty board approval. Wasn't quite sure what his plans were there, other than removing a few trees. So, you know, not to delay this application, he would plan on working on that at a later date. Conditions of approval would have to be established. Some of, some of the, the proposal is for, you know, utility facility off of Old County Road. It's on a property that's governed by a site plan approval, you know, for a lodging facility, a hotel complex. So conditions revolve around the focus of this application can be set on when compliance can be met and the remainder of the site, working with the owner. So that was all sort of discussed at the sidewalk as well.
Mike, there's a dead tree right beside the misplaced building that's leaning towards the corner of the lodging unit that needs to come down as well, we talked to the owner about that.
Is it on this side or this side?
Yeah, it's on there, no, right there.
It is on that side.
And it would hit the hotel units if it comes down. Are there any other comments? Do you have any questions, sir?
Well, I'd like to see how we're going to go by, I know you're gonna have conditions of approval. I'd like to get some feedback on what our proposal in and of itself, extraneous of the things that he has to do. And I understand that he has to do his stuff, so we can go ahead. But I'd like to know any issues with our proposal in and of itself.
I think the only issue that I know was we talked about relocating the driveway to be away from the oak tree, so. So we, we need an updated plan showing that.
Okay, so if you have that, then I can come back again, and we can evaluate our plan and add the conditions of what he needs to do, correct?
Yeah, and I think the, you know, originally, the board was really concerned on the mislocated building appeal to make sure that happened, and the owner was very responsive to that, and committed to submitting it this week.
Yeah, he was more responsive than I thought he was supposed to be.
Yes. In the, you know, the plantings to be, you know, placed along here. And the, you know, determining the permanent location of the dumpster and working with them on that aspect of it as well, are all items that could have conditional deadlines, you know, like a date specific, you know, for planting these trees.
Well, definitely back there, Mike, because they gotta get rid of all the vines, and you gotta get all the plantings in.
Yep.
Because the road's gonna come in at an angle from the backside there, so that all has to be completed before.
Yeah, this.
Any of this can happen.
Yeah, this buffer is part, you know, of an old approval,
Right.
but it, it's directly related to the new facility too, because it's a buffer for that too. So those plantings would need a sooner or later deadline commitment to it.
Now, a question about taking out all those old vines. I know they're not aesthetically great plant, but they're, in the summer, they're a hell of a buffer.
They're invasive, and they're killing all the other trees around the.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just putting that out there.
Yep, they need to come out. We do that on every plan we do now. And there's avarice that you could hire to give you the information you need on those as well, and Mike has?
Sometimes they are very tough to kill. The initial removal, you know, would be, you know, potentially tied to your application, but the constant maintenance afterwards will be the property owner's responsibility.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know exactly what those vines are, but if it's like bamboo, it's not easy to get rid of.
It's not as bad as that, but it's close, yeah.
Is it, is it really?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I guess the other thing I would ask, at what point do we, is it determined that our application is complete?
Uh, would you, you probably wanna see the revised driveway location before, do you mean, complete, I assume?
Yep, well.
Or you could make us complete, you know, the planning office could be completeness agent, and when we see that plan, we could schedule a public.
I mean, the application can be complete. It still may need revisions, but it can be complete.
Yes, oh, yes, exactly, yep.
And that's what I'm asking the board, is, is for the application to be considered complete, and then the things that we need to do to change it.
So you could submit the application to the office, and?
Yeah, it's currently active, so.
Yeah, I mean, we have an application before they.
Once they tell us that it's complete, then we can vote on it and move forward.
Is the application complete?
Well, you could, um, I think the only item that we would, maybe is a completeness. You're right, because most of these items are compliance items versus completeness items.
We can, we can.
You do show a driveway, it's just we're recommending to have it moved.
I make a motion to make the planning office the completeness agent, and to notify us when that's all said.
Yeah.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Who's the motion, I think I?
We voted to make Mike or the planning office the completeness agent. Once they review it and tell us it's complete, then we can move forward.
You know, one thing we do need is the, I know you handed out a hard copy at the sidewalk, and I think, and maybe at the last planning board meeting, you handed out a hard copy, but if you can send us the PDF version of the updated, the conditions?
I actually have, I sent it to Shannon several weeks ago.
The, the PDF as well, the?
Of the, of the, of that?
Yes.
Yeah, she's had that for probably three weeks.
Okay, I, I had an earlier version, like the one that's posted up here, that didn't have all the notes on it that I saw on the one you handed out on Saturday. And so that's, I looked in our subcategory.
Well, I thought, I thought the one you, was just like that.
Yeah, see, it's, it's, it's not as good as the one you handed out at the sidewalk.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Starbucks report sidewalk results. Welcome.
Chair Shukey with Tony Vinnie Terry Group.
Michael, we have comments?
Yes. Site plan call up, there it is, up on the screen. So yes, on this past Saturday, April 5th, we had our sidewalk at 9:00 AM for Starbucks site. We had planning board members, the applicant's consultant was there, myself was there, and Noah Butters were present. The site was well marked with painted points at the building corners. Vegetation and fencing along Edgar Lane was discussed. Drainage to be addressed was discussed as well. We got some updates on main DOT and main DEP permitted, but there wasn't a lot to talk about at the sidewalk, because it was, you know, wide open existing parking, paved parking lot.
Any other comments for any members of the board?
And Mike? Under the ordinance, we'll, we have to make sure they have proper trash handling. Can we impose that they have to have outside receptacles for trash going through the drive-thru?
Oh, the, uh, trash cans?
Yes.
For, for customers as they go through the drive-thru?
And shown on the plan?
Yeah.
What I've noticed is a lot of the fast food restaurants in the area now are taking them out. So if we don't get them on the, on the plans now, then we're gonna be subject to not having trash cans at these places. I mean, you go through McDonald's, they're all gone now, you go through both the Dunkin' Donuts, they're gone. So.
I haven't noticed.
And they generate a lot of trash.
That's because you go to a Roma Joe's.
Well, you're not supposed to say that in front of the Starbucks.
So under, under our ordinance, we're, we're handling trash, we can put that, correct?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, definitely, that goes right to refuse disposal. And normally, that's just the dumpster on site.
Yep.
But on a fast food restaurant type use, no, that's definitely a consideration.
So we'll see on the plan, trash receptacles, please.
We will show them.
Thank you.
I think the evidence shows it's not a Roma, I think it's Dunkin'.
I didn't say a Roma.
No, I said, then Mike goes to a Roma.
Does that mean you're answering me?
I did, I did.
Yeah, no, I, I don't know.
You're a consultant, you'd work for either one of them, all of them, that's okay.
Otherwise than that, I believe you're all set this evening.
Yeah, well, we did have one other, we did have our, our memo we prepared, and everything there has been addressed, except for getting a certification on the drainage. So we recommend the planning board appoint the planning office as the completeness agent.
So move. Is there a second? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Now you're all set. Now, to get those trash receptacles in there. Yep. And the next item is sidewalk results for Wells Plaza, and I believe you're, you're it again.
Yes, sir.
Welcome. Mike, you have comments on the sidewalk there?
We basically had the sidewalk at the same time that we looked at the Starbucks site. We discussed the reduction in parking that's required for the Wells Plaza. I'll just click on that plan. So Wells Plaza, of course, is the, the bigger site that has Rennies and everything else on it. The Starbucks lot is being divided off from that lot, which triggers a site plan amendment for that property as well. That property has a lot of existing parking on it, and I think as we discussed, the parking lot where Starbucks is going just never gets used. But by code requirement, all the uses here do require a certain number of parking, and that's gonna eliminate about 100 spaces. The planning board can grant a reduction in parking for these uses, based on the mixed use and the different times of operation of all the uses on the property. We were recommending that the applicant show some of the employee parking that exists along the backside of the buildings. After we had our Starbucks visit, I rode around the back to look at both dumpster locations and parking, and there were, you know, multiple cars parked in that area, so if they're using it, might as well show it on the plan and take credit for it, so that when the board needs to vote to reduce that parking, instead of reducing it by 100 spaces, maybe only reducing it 50 spaces. But I think from past history and experience, everyone is in agreement that the parking never, never fills up there, so it doesn't seem to be an issue, but that was talked about. As I touched upon, the dumpsters were discussed, and driving around, a lot of the small dumpsters are tucked in nicely behind the building. There was one dumpster that's really close to the property line and, and off, off the back of the pavement a bit. There were a couple other dumpsters on the backside that weren't enclosed, but tucked in close to the building. And overall, seemed to be pretty well managed. It was common about handicap parking spaces. The whole parking lot got repainted, was it last summer, the summer before, I think it was last summer?
Last summer.
And they restripped everything, and a couple of the, maybe the van accessible ADA spaces might be a little short on aisle. I think you were gonna check on that when you were there?
Yeah.
I don't know how they measured out, but.
Well, it actually measured out more, so I'm not sure.
Long?
Yeah, so, so typical van spaces are eight and eight, eight feet for the space, eight feet for the aisle width, and can be shared. And then typical handicap spots are eight feet and five feet. All the spaces I measured, and I did center to center paint lines, were nine feet. And so the van accessible were also nine feet, and then the, actually, the other ones were six feet. So, and I measured, I mean, that grouping that was down from our site. And this was, like you said, it was fresh, it wasn't two years ago, it was definitely last year. So, so I don't know if I was missing something beyond that, but it, and it didn't seem like there were any outliers that weren't attached to those common spots that were marked at least, or painted handicap, so.
Yeah, we require nine-foot wide aisles, but I know federal for ADA requirements is just eight foot for the spaces, and then eight foot for the inaccessible aisle.
Correct.
If we're, if our spaces are nine-foot requirement, that aisle width can go down to six. Five feet would be just a little shy, but.
Yeah, they were, yeah, so the, the ones in between were six feet.
Oh, okay.
And then the ones in between for the van were nine feet.
Wow, okay, that should be okay then.
So, I was surprised.
And we also, um, when I talked about the mile road intersection of the Hanford Xer, and DOT is part of the traffic movement permit, is requiring some crosswalk improvements in that area. And currently, on the plan, it calls for a speed bump or speed hump, I guess you would call it. And Public Works, of course, is in favor of that, because of plowing issues that can come about. I do have an email I sent to main DOT with that recommendation that, that either the hump be eliminated and used to be texture pavement, or at least the taper is lengthened. So it's not a direct hump, but leveled out quite a bit. So I did send the email out to DOT asking those questions.
Okay.
And that's all I have for the sidewalk results, unless someone had something to add?
Make a motion to appoint the planning office as completeness agent.
Second?
Second, all those in favor? That is unanimous. You were all set as well, sir? Great, thank you very much. You're welcome.
Thanks, Mike.
The next item on the agenda this evening is Hawks Nest subdivision, receive final subdivision plan.
So move.
That's for second?
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous, you've been received as well.
Thank you. Lou Chamberlain from Atar Engineering, presenting Built by Adams.
Welcome. Mike, you had comments for us on this?
Yes, uh, this is, um, was similarly approved previously in fall. So the first item we look at when we're looking at file applications is to see if the preliminary conditions of preliminary approval will match, and we went through all those that are listed in the memo. Each of the items or the conditions of approval and preliminary approval have been addressed. And then secondly, we go into the file completeness checklist that's in your packet, and go through that as well.
And then secondly, we go into the final completeness checklist that's in your packet and, uh, go through that as well, and the applicant has addressed all the road items. Um, the only item that, that was on hold is determination of the vernal pool. There's a vernal pool at the back of the property right in this location. And you can't make a determination of whether the vernal pool is special significance until right now, this time of year. And you have to have a biologist go out and count eight masses and draw a couple of the pages, at least two or three. Uh, so that determination is pending. Um, don't know if the board wants to wait for that to be done, or whether you wanna make the planning office the completeness agent and you could still have a preliminary public hearing. Uh, even if it's determined to be of special significance, the impact of that is that there's a two hundred fifty foot buffer around it. You can still disturb twenty-five percent of that two hundred and fifty foot buffer. Uh, so it doesn't affect the ability to have these two lots at any cost and just minimize it for the board, hello? So as I thought, we could still, if you assign us the completeness agent, we could still have a preliminary public hearing and getting all that.
Make a motion to appoint the planning office as completeness agent. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Do you have that scheduled soon?
Yes, they're starting. I think the first visit's gonna be end of this week and it should be complete by the end of the month.
The public hearing could be on the twenty-first, Friday for that.
Yep.
It'd be nice if they had it before the end of the month.
Yeah.
We gotta extend it sixty days?
Uh, yes, it'd be good to do that continuity, but just in case something comes up and your biologist finds issues delay or.
Make a motion, continue the workshop for sixty days. Is there a second?
Second.
That is unanimous. You're all set there. The next item for discussion is Brookside subdivision. Receive final subdivision application.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous, you have been received. Welcome.
My name's Craig Burgess with Acorn Engineering.
Jason Volkey, developer.
Mike, you have comments for us?
Uh, yes, this is a application as well to receive preliminary approval, oh, just a couple of months ago, I think. It didn't seem like that long ago. I, maybe it was January.
End of January.
End of January abouts. Um, so they're resubmitted for their final application. Um, and, uh, like on the last one, the first thing we do is look at the, uh, conditions of preliminary approval, and we went through those. If you look at our, our memo, there were several that weren't addressed. Uh, most of them were pretty minor drafting items, like adding some tax map and lot numbers. Um. There was the, uh, wetland impact for lot eleven from the driveway there that needed to be looked at for finish grading and.
Yeah, that's like less than two hundred square feet. We did receive main, the final main DEP comments, and that was one of them, so. We plan on addressing that here soon. Um, so we're pretty closely getting our DEP covered.
Wow, really?
Yeah.
Really? Yeah, that is, it is, they, they've had some changes up there and whatnot, but, uh. Yeah, and we had, uh, so we had, I think, three or four items that weren't, um, addressed from our preliminary conditions of approval. We did look at some of the final completeness items as well. Uh, most of those have been submitted. Uh, we did have one question. I know we had several correspondence on the roadside path, um, and it to be paved. And, uh, but on the plans it still shows a gravel, um, which is, uh, so we did, uh, have comments on that, but, but due to the preliminary conditions not being met, um, we were just recommending the planning board continue it for up to sixty days until those changes are made. Um, but did you wanna go into anything else on it, or it's, it's not really any different than the preliminary plan from what I saw from the plans, um?
Yeah, there's many changes coming out of.
The DEP or?
Major changes. We just went through the full plan set in, in detail and make sure that all of our Ts were crossed and Is were dotted as far as the stormwater design, because we knew that that was the first time you were seeing that full stormwater design.
Yeah, the storm, I looked at it preliminarily and the stormwater analysis and came up good. Um, I saw that DEP had to do an analytical study too, so that was interesting to see in the packet. Traffic is, is the same as it was for the number of lots. You're providing two D's of access, uh, so it allows you to exceed that two hundred average daily trips. I did have a question. I know, uh, there's a tunnel trail system proposed for the open space. In the stormwater area, it talks about the open space to the town, and I didn't think we were doing that. And, and it was also a question, I know we granted the density bonus for more than fifty percent open space. Um, there has to be some public access allowed to the cemeteries. Was there gonna be public access across the open space potentially too, or, or not?
Yeah, the, the open space is gonna be for the public.
Okay, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that was part of the deal.
Yeah.
Because one of the conditions of the preliminary approval was that we see a draft of that easement thing. But when I saw that, I couldn't quite recall if that was a condition or not.
Yeah, yeah, no, we, we, uh, we labeled it on the plan. That was one of the things you guys wanted us to do, so it's labeled for public use.
Yes, yes, and there is a label on the plan.
Yeah.
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 So one of the conditions was that we actually get, you know, a, a draft of what the management's gonna say.
Okay, alright, yeah, yeah, well, uh, I'll revise the HOA docs, so, uh, same thing, like we're gonna have an easement going to that cemetery. And, uh, we'll clarify the, uh, the easement going to the open space as well, so.
And we did remark up the plans and sent you the markups.
Yeah, yeah, we just saw those, so, yeah, we just got those photos, so we'll, we'll tweak all the rest of the stuff that's on it. Um, was there something else we're waiting for Mike to review? Was he, you wanna talk monumentation?
We have it listed, it still needs to be determined.
A monumentation?
Yeah. Number two on the list on the B.
Oh, a monumentation. We had, uh, oh, monumentation to be determined, um.
I mean, with all the.
Yes, that's a final compliance item.
With all the wetland and with the open space, I don't think iron rods are appropriate. I think it should be granted, so that they don't get pulled underground, which we know happens quite frequently with the iron rods.
Yeah, bounds are required at, um, points of curvature, um, where you have a straight segment greater than five hundred feet. Um, at the original exterior of the boundary, but, you know, if there's certain environmental conditions where things are gonna go missing, then it could certainly be a recommendation of bounds elsewhere.
That's what I'd recommend.
We had a motion?
Make that a motion.
Second.
A second, all those in favor? That is unanimous.
So at certain points in the plan, we can highlight them. Or, or was the motion for all of those points?
For all of them.
Yeah, okay.
There's too much, there's too much wetland in the open space, I don't, we don't wanna be arguing about this later.
We talk about monuments just in the open space, and we talk about monuments in the property corners.
Property corners and, um, wherever they also need to be.
So the fronts and the backs?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Mike, would you think you'll have a chance to review the stormwater and hydro, hydrogeology stuff?
Um.
Just in case, is there anything that we need to?
Yeah, probably for the next meeting, before the, before I walk up.
Before the Friday before the meeting, or?
Oh, yeah, probably.
Most likely you get the memo the Thursday or Friday before the meeting, you won't be able to address them. But, you know, the fact that we have information makes it complete. So we're gonna hold up the early to schedule of public hearing. You really think you did, did your DEP approval that fast?
We don't know. I mean, it's, we, we pretty much addressed all their comments last week, so we're just waiting for them to just send it to us now, so it's possible, but we don't know. We'll let you know in a couple of weeks.
Make a motion to continue the workshop up to sixty days.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
You're all set?
And if the board wants to hold on to the package, they wish to do?
Oh, we don't need to, another one, I hope.
Yeah, we don't want no more.
Any storm in your office?
No.
The next item on the agenda is Bivers Memorial Chapel. I need someone to receive the site plan amendment application, please.
So move.
All those in favor? That is unanimous. Welcome.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Brett. I'm with Subeco Technics, here tonight on behalf of the Bivers.
And they are?
Ducking in, yeah, super.
Ducking in, okay, fine. Thank you. Boss isn't here tonight, huh?
Boss is, he's got the smell and slush.
Good. Mike, you have comments for us?
Um, yes, this is a site that we did a site walk on previously under a pre-app. Um, board book at the side, book at the side, this is out there, had several comments. The guy with the parking changes, the grade changes on the property. Um, so there is the full application now for site plan. And, uh, so we did a fairly complete set of plans to address the drainage. We've had a couple of comments on the plans that we have in the memo for specifying existing proposed block coverage. Um. Uh, we had, uh, a comment about, uh, two shade trees to be required out at Chapel Road. If we have a typo in the memo, it's like we won, but Chapel Road. Um.
I had some markups on the plan. I sent for some grading potentially, some better defined, a couple of proposed swales to make sure the stormwater runoff gets to your, your stormwater structure, that we have at the rear corner. Um, one item was, uh, the aisle width, uh, for the parking in this area was shy by a couple of feet. And a couple of feet isn't much, but it'll impact your, your grading on this side of the parking lot, so we want to make you aware of that. Also, the grading on this side of, of the entrance coming into the building is a, is a significant amount of fill in that area. And we do have a requirement that you can't change the grade more than two feet vertically within ten feet of a property line. And I think you have some of your side slope in that area that's gonna be in conflict with that, so you might have to make that slope steeper, uh, to, to meet that requirement. Um, if it can't stay grass, you can look at rip raft, um, but there are some alternatives to meet that requirement, so we want to make you aware of that as well. Uh, stormwater design, as I mentioned, looked good. Uh, we had, uh, we were looking for, uh, copies of the test pit and septic design for the replacement septic system. Um, also, you show the existing well and mentioned that it's to be, uh, changed in, in greater elevation to the casing, but we're looking to see where the existing water line is. If someone knows, you could sketch it on the plan, you could label it approximate, but with the excavation work around that area, you could, for the contractor to know where that water line is. Um, we're also looking for on the ground utilities to be shown, maybe that's existing going from a pole to the existing building, and maybe they're not changing, but to show where those utilities are again, so we know where they are and your contractor will know where they are. But on this one as well, the plans were very complete, except for a few items, and we recommend that the planning board make the planning office completeness agent, so we can schedule a public hearing.
Question, Mike, you have two items you want to confirm, the incinerator and the noise H and I?
Ah, yes, yeah, the incinerator, I think, um, you know, it is a funeral home, and, I mean, it's possible you could get state permits to have, you know, um, you know, an incinerator on site. Uh, we would just want to make note of that on the plan, that if it's a possible for the future, uh, that it was considered, because we have dust, fumes, odors as a criteria. And if you met all the state requirements, that's not gonna be an issue, because the state requirements are very tough. Um, but I think that the thought was you'd continue in your Kennebunk location for those services.
You won't be doing any cremations or anything there, right?
And given the thought, we could, state law wouldn't allow it.
Oh, you wouldn't be allowed to have a duplicate facility?
We, no, well, funeral homes aren't allowed.
They're not allowed to have them.
They're not allowed to have crematories outside of a twenty acre cemetery.
Really?
I can't even put one at Ocean View Cemetery.
Wow.
So, so barring change in state law, it would be impossible for us to consider.
So the answer is no on that one?
Yeah.
That would be a no.
Yeah. And similar to the machinery, I know that the noise combo is on there as well, and there's no existing generators on this.
Yeah, that's exactly what's, that's true. If you had an emergency generator that kicks on once a week and, you know, we're just mindful of the timing of that generator when it kicks on for any residential abouters, so.
You don't think about adding one on so that if you wanna put one in, you don't have to come back again?
Generator.
Do you have a generator currently?
No.
No, but you might, you might wanna put it on the plan so that you don't have to come back.
You might think about.
I see him from back.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know.
It doesn't mean you have to put it in today, but if it's on the plan, you can.
Just future generator, that's all.
We're not that far from, from needing it.
We don't do that.
Yeah, future generator, that's all. I just can't see coming back for just a generator.
Right, same by generator, you want to.
Mike, question on the, your comments on the grade, um, at the entrance. Are you saying that they would need like a retaining wall in order to meet the, the grade requirements?
I think they could do it if they went with a one or one and a half to one rip raft slope, I think they could meet it. Uh, because you can go up to two feet. I think looking at the, um, slope you had there, it went into that ten foot area, and I, I was a little worried on, you know, this area too, when you widen that another two feet, and the side slope you'll have to put in for there. I think on that side it'll be okay. Um, and even if you had to go a two and a half to one side slope vegetated, or even a, even a two to one, if you need, you know, use some fabric and whatnot. Uh, but on this side, with the amount of grade there, it looked like it'd be difficult.
Yeah, there's just a couple of things. I know on the, the plan south of that bottom entrance there, um, the grades were a little difficult in trying to design it such that like a hearse or a larger vehicle would pot them out, um, trying to go up, so that was one of the concerns that we had, um, or issues that we had discovered while grading the site. Um, and then, as you mentioned too, it's a, it's a little bit of a narrower site. Um, and so I know the twenty-four is fairly standard, but you guys require the, the twenty-six feet for the aisle width, and the same thing for the parking stall dimensions. Um, one question, I guess, is if any of those three with the parking space, the, uh, drive aisle and the, um, grading, if any of them standards are weightable? Is that something where if we would have to redesign?
No, they're, they're in, yeah, they're in section one forty-five, which the board can't give waivers to. The only, the only interpretation area we have is if something's designated specifically for like employee parking, you know, it can be designated as such. And, and for like residential, you're gonna have the residential unit there as well. Those can vary in dimension, because they are specific to someone living there or working there. But the spaces for the general public have to meet those dimensions, and the, the planning board has no authority to waive those.
Okay. Yeah, I just remember with the, the layout of the, the design, we're just trying to maximize the vegetative buffers on the, um, plan north and south of that as much as possible, so.
Otherwise than that, do we wanna make you completeness agent?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Do you need us to continue the workshop too?
Uh, no, I think that one's fine.
Yeah.
We're okay, we don't need them?
No.
Alright, good. You're all set tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we need, do we need? Once you do the, once you do the completeness agent.
Got it.
Okay.
Oh, there's someone.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Breeze Landing subdivision. He was hiding in the background.
He was.
And for the record, would you like to tell everybody who you are, please?
Yes, my name's Jeff Leva. I'm with Civil Consultants. I'm here representing the applicant for, uh, this proposed subdivision at nineteen twenty-two Post Road.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Michael, you have comments for us?
Uh, yeah, we've got some revised plans submitted from the last meeting. Uh, most of the comments were addressed. There were still a couple of small ones that are drafting mostly that we even be taking care of and address. Um, I did a memo for the, uh, review of documents, uh, for condominium, and a memo in your packet for that. Uh, also did an updated memo for, um, some of the design comments, the design memo that was produced for previous meetings. Um, all of those have been addressed. Um, I think the couple of items we're looking for is a draft easement to the town for, uh, the public easement along by St. Crook. And then a draft easement for future sidewalk along the front. Uh, so we're looking for the attorney to give us that, uh, document, seeing that we are, um, both viewed by myself and the town attorney. Um, I think that one of the bigger items that the applicant wants to discuss is the proposed noise. I had watched the, I wasn't at the last planning board meeting, but I.
I wasn't at the last planning board meeting, but I watched it and seemed like it would recommend a notice based on what I think the planning board's discussion was, which was to have, um, it based on providing funds at the beginning of the project. Um, and if more information was available on the future town project to get a grant and work on pedestrian and bike issues all on Route One. That, that money could be used for a future ultimate plan for sidewalks and pedestrian access. But with a, a soft gap measure that prior to, you know, the end of the project, that things weren't determined on what was happening on Route One. That the sidewalk proposed would get built. At least that's how I interpreted the discussion at the last meeting. Uh, the developer, the applicant would rather just provide the funds and, like, avid tradition, if that's correct to describe you. That they'd rather just, you know, provide the funds and the town would have it by the, by the sidewalk fund provisions within ordinance. You know, they have seven, the town would have seven years to use it. Um, if it doesn't get used, then it gets refunded back to the owner development. Um, and within that time period, the, um, Route One project would hopefully be underway or at least determined at that point. Uh, so I guess it gets back to the board to discuss the sidewalk. Um, and either meeting the sidewalk construction or payment in lieu of it. And on the, on the table, I had put copies of the ordinance and, you know. Yeah, I've, I've been under the impression that, you know, it's up to the planning board to decide that, whether it gets constructed or whether you take money in, in lieu of that. Um, but this is on the chapter two oh one, on the streets and sidewalks. Um, and in that section, paragraph D just sort of plainly says, "A property owner in the area covered by the sidewalk development plan may, in lieu of construction of a sidewalk or otherwise required by the ordinance, make a contribution to the sidewalk development fund." It really doesn't specify that Public Works has to approve it. It does say Public Works has to approve any, uh, design, you know, of the sidewalk and whether it meets the specifications or not. But it doesn't, it doesn't say the planning board gets to make that determination. It doesn't say even the Board of Selectmen get to make that interpretation. It just sort of puts it out there as an option that the developer can do one or the other, which I, um, now that it was brought to my attention, I've read it three or four times. And it's, uh, I, I always thought it was at the planning board's discretion, whether it got built or whether money got put in the fund. And the ordinance really doesn't say that though. Um.
I think the discussion we had at the last meeting was that because of the, this unique nature of this with a, with a brook right there. Um, that it'd be difficult for, for us to, uh, require him to do it. Uh, first of all, because we don't know what the, the state's plan is for that area. Um, the only concern that I had, and I thought perhaps the rest of the board shared that, was that, um, if you look at, um, twenty twenty-five versus twenty eighteen, seven year difference, a huge difference in costs. And it's asking if the, the applicant would voluntarily agree to, you know, if the sidewalk gets built six years down the road. Agree to the, the, the average unit cost for the sidewalk as opposed to what it is now, that was the only.
And projecting for inflation for that time period?
Yeah.
No, I think, I, Mike and I had a discussion about that. Um, I tried to work with Public Works to do this, cause this is a, um, the unique situation where it's, you know, at a tough spot, there's, we're not connecting to any sidewalks that are really next to us. We're in a sloped area, we've got a guardrail, and then we've got that brook crossing that would have to be some sort of a bridge type of situation. If, if the culvert doesn't get changed, which I don't think it's going to. Um, looking at that, working with Mike as the town engineer's side and Steve and Public Works and come up with a cost estimate for that. That's realistic based on what this is. Um, and then maybe use that as a projector to figure out what it is to do a, an in lieu fee instead of, um, working this. And talking with Mike too, is that it seems like that fund can be used, doesn't necessarily have to be applied to this particular pop, property. But that fund can use, um, monies for studies in the adjacent area. So if there's an, an improvement that can be used out of that fund here for an existing sidewalk that needs, you know, new, um, pedestrian crossing lights or something like that, potentially that money could be used for that part, portion of it as well.
Yeah, I, I believe that's the whole purpose of the fund, the theory of the fund is that a property requires it. But it may be more damage to build the sidewalk somewhere else to connect up to the something maybe.
Mike, I think you gotta read section F before you say that, because section S says that if it isn't used for the sidewalk that it was contributed to, he gets his money back.
Right. Yeah, within that, within the sidewalk development plan.
Yeah, well, that's, that section is in front of his property. So if it doesn't get built, he gets his money back no matter what. And, and the issue that I have right now is the state of Maine is going to be almost a billion dollars in the hole next year. So you're not gonna be looking at any of these sidewalk plans going through for at least eight to ten years.
And that's a big concern.
And that's a huge concern I have, and I still say that sidewalk needs to be built now.
Most of that, the money for the Route One corridor project too is coming federally. And we, we know a lot of those funds are.
Those funds are going bye-bye right now. I mean, that, that's, uh, the problem that we have right now is we keep doing this. Putting money in a fund, saying it'll be built later on, and nothing seems to be getting built for these sidewalks.
Again, that's why I went back to when, I know we were talking about it. Cause they don't wanna put in a sidewalk that you're just gonna rip out.
They're not gonna rip it out.
Or they're, they're not gonna connect to it either. We don't know how, so without any set drawings of how they're gonna connect to it. If you, we gotta wait for it, we're gonna be out seven years and regardless, they're gonna get their money back. I'd rather extend it to ten years in writing somewhere, so that way the money stays there.
We don't have the authority to do that.
But they can put it onto their notes, it's an ask we can have.
I just think that, you know, we're not getting any sidewalks built, we, and that ordinance is there, it's been there, and we have very few sidewalks built in this town. I mean.
Yeah, I can see that language now you were talking about.
Yeah, I mean, if, if it's not built in front of their place, I mean, within seven years, they get their money back.
Again, that's why I'm going with the extension, past the seven. It says that we can hold it for seven, they can say they, they wanna leave it there for fifteen years if they want.
I think that, that, I think that the developer's minimal to that type of language to be able to work that out for that, for that situation, not knowing what's going to go on. Not knowing how long it's gonna take, and you know, another thing here is that, you know, we had talked previously about our DEP permit. We did receive our DEP permit, um, but there was a typo in it and everything in that was supposed to say Town of Wells, said Town of York. So, yeah, so I think they, they copied the county or whatever. So, um, they're updating that information, but they told me I'll have that in the next week or two. So, you know, that's one of the last pieces, part of the, the, the completeness items here. Um, but not knowing again, um, putting a sidewalk over there that is, um, needs DEP review, needs DOT review on what they're gonna want, and, and I think it, it feels that, um, the, the payment in lieu seem the better, most practical for this situation.
So I got a question for you. Why can't, how could that agree? So why can't we make recommendation, recommended changes to streets and sidewalks, ordinance? And on the note, have the builder agree to comply with the new ordinance that gets passed? And not build a sidewalk currently, cause it doesn't make any sense to put a sidewalk there.
Doesn't make any sense at all.
But if we, if they would agree that, cause this needs to be changed, obviously. So if they could agree that, and we make reasonable changes, it's not like, you're right. Cause what you really need to do is put a comment here that can be used for other projects, that doesn't say that in here anyway, that no matter how I read this. It also says that if a grant is issued, a lot of their funds go back to them based on what the grant recovered, so.
Exactly.
So what I would recommend is you put a note on the plan that says we will comply with the new ordinance once passed. And other than that, this, this applies.
And we did start working on that. And it was one of those items that was gonna take more work to get on the meeting, so it started at the November.
Well, or they could just be willing to pay us the cost and non-refundable. Instead of putting the sidewalk in. They don't have to go by this ordinance, they can just turn around and say this is what the cost is gonna be. We agree upon that, we'll donate that to the town in exchange for not having to build it.
That, that could be more of a.
If they agree on that.
That could be more of a performance guaranteeing condition of this approval.
Right, and then who puts that?
As opposed to complying with two oh one.
What's that dollar value on? Right.
Yeah, well, the estimate that we have there, yep. I mean, I, I wouldn't have a problem with them if they were gonna pay into the fund and that's it, it's done, no, no return of any money. They'd have, but they would have to agree with that, you couldn't put that as a condition.
Correct, yeah, yeah, it would have to be something that, you know, that parts off.
Yep, yep.
Which it sounds like they're in the community.
Yep.
So your approvals for DEP are coming.
Are coming, yes, yeah, we have an approval number, but I can't give you the document because it's not, right.
That's the second surprise, it's gonna take a week or two to fix a typo.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
So.
Vote to continue the workshop for up to thirty days?
We need to continue this for thirty, or do you wanna do sixty just because?
One item I was gonna ask the board to take the vote on for determination is the last plan had, it wasn't determined where, where the vegetation was gonna be. There was some plant that was right in the area.
Oh, yep.
And I, I, I figured if it was on the other side of the book, we was considering.
Nope, we had talked about that, of keeping it on that side. And it seemed like the board was, uh, amenable to that, and we had their, I'm changing it for some reason. It says arborvitae's on it, and it makes sense, we don't wanna do that. So we've got, uh, either Douglas fir or spruce to be in those, uh, plantings that infill that section along the, the brook that's, um, kind of on just south of the roadway. And then also supplement, uh, some of the buffer on, to the, uh, to the east neighbor down there, right where the pointer is on that side.
And we're gonna do it in the dark ashes.
What's that?
We're gonna do it in the dark ashes.
Yes, yeah, yes. Yeah, and those, and then some of those other dark hatches that you see, the cross hatches, those are all no cut, no disturbance wooded buffers as well.
So I think the board held off on a vote on that, they're saving out a plan. So, yeah, this plan says arborvitae's, but it was changed to Douglas fir or spruce. But if the board would like to take a vote to approve the proposed landscaping, should be amended.
So move, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous. We have a motion for thirty days, did you want sixty?
Do it.
DEP won't take that one.
Do it.
We're gonna make, we're gonna make the motion for up to sixty days.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Just on the off chance.
Yeah.
Because, because you need to come and be present to require an extension now, don't you, Mike?
Yes. That was the one.
Okay, I believe the next item on the agenda is great station, site and subdivision. Receive site plan amendment, site plan application, excuse me.
Will you receive the great station site and subdivision, site plan application? Second.
All those in favor? That is unanimous, you have been received.
Good evening, uh, my name is Jeff Aliva, I'm with Civil Consultants here, representing Benjamin Max, the developer of this project. Um, so what we have here is, is continuation of the project that we, that we previously presented, and we had a sidewalk for here. Um, we're moving along in, in the design. Um, and we received comments back from, um, from planning staff on Friday that we're working through. And we'll come back with a response memo to address the comments as we forward through the process. Um, but what we got here is a forty-six, forty-five unit, uh, life care facility. Um, roadway coming off directly across from Drake's Island Road. Uh, you come into the development, there will be a community building on the right, uh, that will have, uh, community space for residents. Uh, office space for, uh, medical personnel to be able to use that and, um, some storage area. We've got, um, a pickleball court, that, that's the, the in thing, uh, with the, a, you know, a, a place for outdoor exercise. Uh, we have sidewalks around the develop and, and sidewalks coming into, uh, onto Route, Route One. Uh, we looked at the, um, corridor study and, uh, followed that and marked on the plans what the corridor. A study recommended for removing one of the, uh, crossings that's just to the, to the north here, that's already painted. And then we'll have our crossing that comes down right, uh, at the Drake's Island Road there with the pedestrian markers. Um, we have this loop road, we've been through technical review a couple of times on this, uh, project. We had come before the board and received a, um, I don't know, was it, was it a waiver or, or an update revision? To be able to use the current, um, traffic study counts for elderly housing for our traffic numbers. Um, we also have completed a detailed traffic study and includes a signal warrant analysis for the intersection at Route One Drake's Island. Um, again, these are, are, are life care facility projects that are elderly, uh, meet the requirements and the restrictions indicated in the ordinance. Um, we have a combination of, uh, different types of stormwater, a lot of infiltration and pervious pavement to be able to be used here to capture our stormwater. Our stormwater's been, um, the ongoing joke here is that, um, we should've had our DEP permit by now. Um, but, uh, we get here back from the stormwater engineers, they have no further comments with what we've done. They've reviewed our project, they had a couple of comments back in June that we addressed. And we're still waiting for, uh, final report on that for, for stormwater. I think once we, you know, get that, that's gonna, you know, address any kind of comments that you have, Mike, on what we're, what we're attacking and handling there.
I think the only drains common I, I have outstanding is just the connection to Route One and make sure that the depth didn't conflict with the sewer line.
Yep, exactly, yep.
But all the other drains are great.
Yep, yep, and then we also have the connector across the, the one other lot, that's the existing motel. Uh, where the, when we had, um, the first public kind of meeting here, we had some public comments about a, uh, pond backing up in those neighbors there. Uh, right after that meeting, Benjamin went out there and cleaned out that pipe and opened that area up and addressed that situation, uh, as we go through that. So through that area, um, we could talk about the application, I could talk about, talk about the traffic study. I know that there was always been discussion about, uh, traffic light here. Um, our analysis, and when we have the public hearing, we'll have our traffic engineer here for the meeting. Um, analysis before development, it trips the requirements for a signal. It, um, indicates that that signal could be, um, kind of a seasonal signal where on off-season, it's just a blinking yellow like it is now. And then during the season, it would become a timed light situation. Um, it indicates that, uh, our, our contribution with our elderly housing doesn't trigger it, the intersection already needs it. Our increase in traffic to that, um, to that intersection is very, very small. Less than a couple percentage if it's, uh, that for, for what goes through that intersection. Um, but we wanna talk to the board about, I guess, what the process is, how that moves forward with a light. Um, again, it goes back to the potential Route One corridor grant study, how that may happen. Uh, our traffic engineers reached out to DOT to try to talk to them, see what their feeling is. I don't have an answer yet on what their DOT thought process is about timing for a light here and how that would eventually work as we move forward with our design. If there's, you know, how that works with us contributing to, um, design of the light or working on a contribution there and how that could potentially be worked in with us phasing the development of our project into several different phases for, uh, building out our, our, our work here for the housing.
So you keep referring to seniors when you're talking about this, and if I'm a senior coming down Route One North and I have to make a left-hand turn into that area without a traffic light, that's a disaster waiting to happen.
You know, you have the center turn lane there, I mean, it, it is, I mean, it's, yes, I'm not saying it's not tough, it's, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It's not, it's not an intersection where there are bad accidents.
We've talked about this all along, that it was gonna need a traffic light there, we didn't hide that fact from you at all.
No, agreed, yep.
Sure. It needs a light.
Pardon?
Agreed, it needs a light, I mean, the warrant study says it needs a light.
And it, it comes down to how that light happens and how that, how the, what the burden is and how does that get shared? And what is the, I guess, responsibility for one property owner for something that's already needed? That's what we, you know, as we move forward here, we wanna talk about that.
The project on Chapel Road, then, um.
In the Chapel Road project, we require a light at the end of Chapel Road.
And a repave of the road to bring it up so it didn't flood anymore?
Yep.
The project got canceled, and the light had to still go in and be paved, but it didn't get done by that developer, but the developer was originally gonna be paying for that, so.
I think the board's position is you need to install the light. But I should say you wanna discuss this as we go along, so.
And, and you know, the, the cost of doing an improvement like that, you know, if it was looked at as a town project, it'd be something you have to go to the board to second and ask them about, and have you budgeted if the town was to make a contribution. I mean, it does tie in with the whole Route One corridor study, you know, again, if those grants come through and part of that project, so it's.
They didn't call for a light in that project.
That's the problem with that study is they didn't.
That's right, they didn't call for a light in that project.
They, they didn't actually go up that far on the, on the study.
Yeah, they didn't, they went right by it.
Right up by it. They didn't do any traffic counts at that's, at that location though, which is odd.
You know, they did.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, so, yeah, so we have that data.
Okay.
Because we did traffic, I'm just going through the process.
We're full on you right now that we're gonna.
I guess.
Digging on this.
Realistically, you're trying to figure out, are you gonna have to buy a light, or is the town gonna buy a light, is kinda where your question is?
My understanding is that D O T says it needs a, I mean, from the warrant study, D O T is gonna say, okay, it needs to be a light. And so it goes on to the, the list of things, and it might be what, four or five years before they get to it. Um, I mean, I, I, from my position, I know that there needs to be a light. For decades, people have said, hey, we need a light there, everybody on Drake's Island wants a light there, but why should it be on me when I'm only adding a tiny amount to the traffic count?
Right, so again, kinda my overall question is, you're trying to figure out, do you need to pay for it, or does the town need to pay for it?
I, I think the biggest problem there is you're not just talking about a light, you're talking about road widening there as well. Because there's, there's no way they're gonna put in a, a light the way it is existing, the D O T would never do that, never approve it.
And, and just like the project up in High Pine where they had to widen the road, the project had to widen the road. You know, that's, the, the impact is right at that intersection.
Yeah, and I think as we move forward here, that's where our traffic engineer will be able to talk about the, the counts and any potential lane improvements that D O T, that he thinks D O T would want as they work through this review of the intersection.
Have you gone to D O T yet?
I know, uh, I haven't talked to D O T, I know our traffic engineer has.
I mean, D O T probably is gonna tell you they want you to put light in, because that's what they did to the other developer.
Yeah.
They told him, it's too bad, it needs a light, you're gonna impact it, you gotta put it in.
Even the lane widening on both sides, one oh nine had to be paid for by the contractor.
Yep.
I'm just surprised, and, and I agree with you, and this, this D O T traffic study was a total waste of time, because they didn't, they didn't do a traffic count up there. And their traffic counts were flawed when they did them, so.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And they even wanna put a stoplight in front of uh.
South Street.
Yeah, what is it, Main Street? No, I'll, I'll, a hundred yards down past the uh.
Harbor Road, yeah.
Yeah, the other side, yeah.
Other side, that, no.
And now, yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, the study wasn't that great, but it's still.
This is the cemetery.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, what you think about is that we have, we've, we have our traffic counts that were done in September, early September. So it's still high traffic with tourist area on that, so that's, that's one of the reasons why we wanna make sure we had to know those values, to be able to look at that, at those areas and look at peak season and off-season for that.
So you did the counts in September?
Yeah.
So June, July, and August are even, even gonna be higher?
Oh, agreed, yeah, they, yeah, yeah, and they have, they have those modifiers for that, that D O T has to use for that.
Well, how, how many trips per hour were you showing coming in and out?
Coming in and out of, uh, in and out of ours?
Yes.
Development?
You said forty-seven units, right?
Yep.
Forty-six.
Yep, yeah, forty-five, forty-six units, and bear with me here for a second, I'm sorry.
It's not as great as a subdivision, correct?
No.
Yeah, that was the, you know, the three big aspects of this application that they identified last year was the trip count. Because once you get to two hundred average daily trips, you need second means of access, and they only have one. So the board looked at granting a waiver to be able to utilize the current I T manual. Uh that was in September, I think, and the board wanted to waive current ordinance to allow that. And that came up with a trip count that was less than that two hundred average daily trips, so one access was okay. And since then, we've changed the ordinance to match what you gave the waiver for. But a waiver, you know, to a need we at that point was given, uh so, yeah, the traffic generation is of course a small fraction of the overall traffic running on Route One. But the, the aspect the board has to look at is, does this development make it more unsafe by any additional traffic?
Well, that's, that's the problem.
Yeah.
Well, I, we had a letter written by the traffic engineer, that, I mean, it, from his perspective, obviously, our consultant. Um, that it was really, it was normal, like, it, 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 it's not a dangerous intersection, and having people on the other side won't make it much, if any, more dangerous, and we have, we have a letter that, that we could share that he wrote, but my, my ask to the board, okay, is that simply, if we phase this, do three phases, and by the time I can start phase three, we have a light in place. It needs a light, nobody's saying it doesn't need a light, but I don't see why I should have to try to jump over the bar of a light to get started.
But you're saying two things, so first you're saying that you shouldn't be helping come for the, full cost of the light, and then now you're saying if you phase it, that a light will be in place by the end of it, are you now saying that you'd pay for the light by the end of the project?
No, I'm saying that we would, I'm saying that by the end of the project, we, or by the third phase, we figure out. You know, 'cause it, it doesn't happen over months, this stuff happens over a, a while.
Interesting.
Yeah, I think we'd need to look at a phasing diagram.
Sure, yeah, and that's part of our plan there. The fir, the first phase, Steve, if you look at this, is that first area, use that first intersection as a, as a emergency turnaround and stop it there, run our infrastructure for water and sewer, tie it off at those corners and do that development south of where Mike's mouse is in that first, as first phase. And then, and then since the developer owns the lot on the left, where the mo- old motel is, being able to get construction access up through there to work on the backside, so it doesn't disrupt the current development, to be able to work on the other phases. And then maybe by, you know, as we move forward in the process, we'll have some input from D O T about what their schedule is, what their thought, if there's funding from D O T to do this, and we'll have more information on, on that. I do, I apologize, Steve, I don't have the, the peak hour trips, I just, I brought the, the signal warrant analysis, I didn't bring the initial uh traffic review of that.
I think before we approve this, we gotta determine who's gonna pay for that light. Can't, can't approve something the same.
No, agreed, I think that, yeah, I think as we move through the process, that's where we're, that's what we need to work on.
We need to move, we're gonna have to widen the road here, because.
Yeah, I mean, that's, there's a lot of issues that go on there right now.
I, I, I guess, I, I just have a hard time making them swallow the cost for a light when we know that light's been needed there for the whole year. But by the same token, not saying they shouldn't contribute to it, or that they shouldn't make the necessary roadway improvements required for that, but I, I, I think it's kinda tough to make them pay for the whole thing.
Right, that's kinda where I, where my question was going, is.
We're not saying we're not paying anything.
Right, again, so at that point, if you go to the, I would assume the select board and say, hey, guys, we wanna go fifty-fifty, we wanna go twenty-five, seventy-five, whatever. That's why I was asking the question of, do you wanna pay for it? Or do you want help with it, which is why my question was kinda out of direct as it was.
Yeah.
But see, if you say, hey, I don't wanna pay for it at all, then we have a problem. If you say, hey, I'm gonna throw in fifty percent, go to the select board and say, hey, I'll put in fifty, you put in fifty, we get a light.
But it has to be approved by the state, no matter what it is.
Well, absolutely.
That's number one.
I'm worried about funding.
But, but the problem is, the state funds it, not the town of Wells.
Then go to the state and get funded.
Well, that's fine, they can go to the state and see if the state's willing to fund it, but the town themselves shouldn't have to pay for it.
Right, but either way, it's either, I wanna make sure they're putting in some for zero, which is where my question is, to move this along.
And, and if I could speak. So my understanding from the traffic engineer is that it, it's gonna be on like the, the five-ish year plan, four or five-year plan with, with D O T. We could have a meeting with them where then we say, hey, guys, we need to, after I talk to the select board, we need to come together, and this needs to happen sooner, because um, you know, development or, or, and so then it could be a combination, Wells, myself, and D O T. Um and that's something that I think he's the expert on, on negotiating.
Well, well, again, Wells is not gonna put it in even, even though it's needed now. We, the town would not be putting this in, the state would put it in if they say they need it, but the town isn't, now you're saying that.
I'm saying the funding could be.
But the funding isn't gonna come from the town of Wells. The town of Wells doesn't do it, the state does it. Just like the intersection of, of um, of um Chapel Road, the town didn't put that light in, the state put it in. So if there's gonna be a light there, the state's gonna pay for it. So if the state says there needs to be a light, then there's gonna be a light there from the state, but they're gonna turn around and tell you, because of your impact, that you're gonna pay for it. Or you can negotiate with them to pay fifty percent and them fifty, but the town of Wells should not be paying for this.
Well, my understanding is that it's possible, but we'll work on that on our side.
Yep.
And, I mean, we're, we're putting in a development that'll add huge revenue to, you know, with the tax base and not affect the schools. So I, I don't, I don't see why the ta, why it'd be an issue for the town to chip in.
Well, first of all, the town doesn't have it in their budget, so if, you know, that's not gonna happen there.
The later credit for it in one oh nine was paid for by the state.
Yeah. So I mean, I mean, the town's not gonna pay for it, I guarantee you that. So the, the next step is whether you can get the state to pay for it, and then get it on a timeline so that your project doesn't impact the, the system uh during the peak se- season, that's the big issue. Off-season, it's not gonna impact.
You made the, you made the comment that, that the light might be five years down the road, aren't you looking to complete this project before five years or?
My understanding is now that it's been sent to D O T from the traffic engineer, it's about four or five years out that they would act, it would be on their work role for four or five years from now. But there's a way to advance that, and so my hope is that we can come to a mutually beneficial agreement where we, we have a you know, when the light's gonna go in place, where hopefully I can get approvals and it's, you know, by.
Right, but, but what I'm saying is, is waiting the five years wouldn't benefit you, because aren't you looking to get it done sooner than that?
No, I mean, the holding costs are, you know, I, I don't, yeah, it'd be nice to actually start this this year.
The other question is, what's the state gonna require for improvements at the intersection? So you've got a lot to do with the state right now, because that's a state road, they've gotta decide the intersection, the openings and everything else.
Yeah, and that's, that's what our, our traffic engineer has been working on, so, I mean, he's looked at, he's looked at the lane analysis and all that as well, too, yep.
And then maybe, you know, part of the phasing could include certain improvements to be made around the intersection, widening, shoulders. You know, not necessarily putting in a whole turn lane, but wider shoulder that effectively acts as one. You know, certain improvements could be required prior to getting any building permits, but that that would satisfy the phase one. And then a phase two gets more involved with, with intersection work. But, you know, by making improvements, you can make the argument that you've offset your impact by making it somewhat safer.
Yep.
So in phase one, you're gonna put the office and stuff in?
That would be the intent, is to do that work and hold that outside, yep, exactly, 'cause that's part of life care requirements, is to be able to have that as well, yep. And that allows us to get that work in there, 'cause all that infrastructure and drainage is, is all, you know, part of that system. So you can't really not do one thing and come back at it without disrupting more of, of, of the site itself.
And, and what do we have, do we have garages on these?
Yep, they do have garages.
One car in the garage, one car in the driveway.
One car, yes, yep.
So what are you gonna do for the additional parking for uh caregivers?
For caregivers, we've got, well, I mean, there's, there's room there, we've looked at the driveways that have two cars in the gro, in the, in the driveway to be able to have that. Um we have some parallel parking stalls up around the loop on that edge as well, um right in that area for a couple spaces there for caregivers to come through. Uh but to be able to work off of that, we, I think we feel we've got the parking around the, that building itself for the um, for those spaces based on what we feel i- is needed for, you know, open space for the community room and the doc, you know, if it's a visiting physician that comes in or, you know, health services that come in there, have some office space in that, in that big building to be able to be used for residents there.
So it's, the driveway's gonna be deep enough for two cars, or it's deep enough for one car?
I wanna say it's, I, I wanna look at it again, but it's.
I think it's wide enough for two cars.
It's wide enough for two cars, but they have a driveway.
And they all have a garage.
They have a garage, and then.
I'm just making sure there's parking for guests visiting.
Yes, yes, that's what we want, that's what we will look to, because we have a tight site there, that, that driveway's wide enough to have two vehicles.
Did you consider, is, are you considering making the loop a one-way?
No, we've got, um, it's, it's twenty feet wide, so to be able to get the fire truck through that space. Um I think people will learn their way, whichever they wanna go through it, but I want, I'd like to keep it two-way traffic. And then earlier we had, um, we came here, we had uh that contaminated soils. I mean, it was, um, and there was discussion of that. Um after the meeting, we had that first one, um Benjamin went out and, and had that, all that material removed from the prop, property properly disposed of, and we have the D E P order uh for that, that closes that out with the soils, all soils removed, so that's no longer a site concern.
What else, Mike?
Um I, I think, you know, when we did a, in a depth review of this, I think almost a year ago. Uh we were at the point where we believed it to be complete, but because of the pretty good issue, and, and that was outstanding at that time. At that time, the board hadn't given a waiver for the traffic counts to make sure one means of access was okay. And we, of course, didn't have the warrant analysis on the intersection. Now that those items have all been addressed, um, there, there are just a couple of red marks, I think we had in the plan that that weren't updated, so we were recommending making the planning office completeness agent and scheduling a public hearing. I think we have all the information available at the moment, you know, no decisions are made on that light in that intersection. But it's a good time to bring the public in, and have our preliminary public hearing.
What about if they, if D O T comes in and says they wanna widen that intersection, we're gonna have another public hearing so everybody can talk about it?
We have to the final, right?
We can, or they, or we could do it as part of the final, 'cause we'll have another whole public hearing for the final application as well.
Now, has the fire chief approved the roadway system?
We've had a couple of staff review committee meetings on it, and yep, he was satisfied with the radiuses and the width of the road.
Yeah, and we have hydrants out through there, too, yeah.
Make a motion to make the planning office completeness agent and to schedule a public hearing if appropriate.
Second.
Is there a second, all those in favor? That is unanimous.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda is other business.
We've had a couple of staff review committee meetings, since the last planning board meeting. Uh we had back-to-back ones, just the way the schedule worked out for March and April, um.
Have a good night.
Thanks, good night. Uh we had a tire service um facility that's going through the approval for, for, for minor changes to the site. And uh reviewing a plan for a gunquit, a Wells Agunket Resort, and it started off with staff review committee. Uh but through getting the as-built plan of the property and looking at aerials, um some areas, disturbance occurred in the hotel buffer area. Uh so that's being, uh kicked up the planning board, probably see it at the next meeting. Uh we also, I just made copies of all the final versions of the ordinances that'll be on the due valid, and wanted to include that in your packet. Just so you had a, a last version copy of that, there were a couple of changes that the board of selection made after they had their public hearing process, too, and a couple of them. Um so there were a couple of changes since the last time you saw it, so I thought it'd be good for you to have the, the last version. And on the agenda, I also would put down whether the board wanted to discuss, you know, ordinance changes to be targeted for November. Um I think the board of selection is gonna be doing a workshop on a couple as well. Uh revisit accessory dwelling units that at the last board of selection meeting did not get voted to be put on the due valid. Um so I believe that one will be coming back and probably being looked at for November, potentially, uh to coincide with short-term rentals. Um 'cause that was what the planning board discussed, was to doing the two together. Um and I think with some of those questions answered on short-term rental use, that maybe the A D U's could be relooked at.
The um, the A D U should be separated from the affordable housing, 'cause if it was separated, it would've gone through the A D U's.
Yeah, and I think when we were. Yeah, and I think when we workshopped it at the planning board level, we had it as two separate questions. And then it got put together with.
Somehow they put the two together.
Yeah, the town attorneys.
Because it was the affordable housing that they object, objected to, not the ADUs.
Yep.
And we're gonna need to understand the changes they made to the workforce housing at the hotels. 'Cause then you have to continue working on worker housing, based on what they did, I'm not sure I'd approve a hotel just be out here for workforce housing.
I, I changed my mind on it also, and I don't think it should be.
And we also talked about doing separate off-site work, worker housing too.
That's what we're saying, we, we think that we shouldn't do that.
Based on what they just changed, if that one goes too, it's almost they can have it be around that, so.
Because if we turned around and did that, they would just have year-round housing there instead of, and there's nothing supposedly we can do about it.
I guess, I guess, you know, changing those dates just gave, made no sense, but, um, you know, we, we got someone up there who changed their minds, so.
Yeah, I think the version that went to them, you have a five-month closure period where, or four months where you couldn't have worker housing there. And it changed to a two-month, a three-month period, but.
Yeah.
And, and the other thing that bothered me a lot was they come right out, one person at the public hearing came right out and said that they're doing it anyways, people are staying there. They're breaking the law anyways.
They said, we're doing it now, so what's the difference?
And she, and she's on the lodging committee, which gets me kind of upset, 'cause she knows it's not supposed to be done.
Wouldn't that be a conflict of interest?
I'm just telling, no, the lodging committee is made up a hu-, almost a hundred percent of lodging owners.
Right.
So, I mean, when you come up right out and they admitted it at a, at a media, at a public hearing and the selectmen do nothing about it. I hate to say it, but one of the selectmen sat there and said, we know that they're staying there also. He says he sees them all the time and nothing gets done, and it doesn't make sense to me to even write ordinances anymore.
Well, it took the code office to enforce it, so you can't blame the selectmen.
It took the select board.
They pointed it out, they're, they're doing it. But that changes the whole dynamic, what we were trying to do for the workforce housing, so.
Yeah. The motion adjourned.
Second. All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned, there's nothing to sign this evening, is there?
No, there's not.
You don't think you don't have to sign your paycheck before you go?